Calling to order the September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, meeting of the thirty-fifth Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kedekel?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kedekel with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes, additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now would you please stand for the invocation, and I see Reverend Tal Sullivan with us.
Let's bow and pray. Our God in heaven, we thank you at the beginning of this council meeting tonight for your presence that is with us. Thank you, God, for being with us and helping during the times recently where there's been lots of difficulty that people in Berkeley and surrounding communities have faced with flooding basements and power outages and many other difficulties which would be considered much worse. And, God, we thank you for the many that you have blessed our city with who have done a great job serving and have given of their time and putting in long days. We just thank you for the leadership that you've given our city. And we pray that you'll continue to strengthen and give wisdom to them, to those who are serving. And as there's difficulties and financial matters that will be dealt with in the days ahead because of it, we ask that you'll continue to guide us. As we recognize this evening those who have served our city, we again thank you for blessing us. We pray, God, that we will continue to be a place where people desire to live and it be a place, Berkeley would be a place where your blessing rests. And we ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a city department, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being discussed. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. Judy Rubin, and I live in Huntington Woods. I'm the Executive Director of the Tri-Community Coalition of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park. And I want to say to the Reverend that was such a nice invocation. It was very nice, since we've all been through the same thing. I have a few good things to tell you about tonight. The first thing is that we've expanded our staff. We have a social work student from Oakland University. Her name is Dana Oker, and she's a wonderful new addition for this year. We're very lucky to have her. She's going to be designing a website and is very excited to participate with Corey James, our program coordinator, in changing the U, like inspiring the U group, the Young Adult Coalition at Berkeley High School, to join with the SAD chapter. So that's their new announcement, and they're very excited about that. So, as are we. We also have a new program director. You may have known Deanna Toko has left us after seven years and has gone on to be a consultant in other things. We miss her terribly, but we do, we were so fortunate and blessed to meet a young woman who lives in Oak Park. She has been a schoolteacher in the Detroit School System for three years. She decided to go into nonprofit, and she walked into our door, and she's been fantastic. Her name is Regina Hollingshead, and she's going to be continuing with the programs of our signature programs of Leadership Breakfast and Dialogue Day, but she's anxious to establish some new and exciting programs that she's going to have her own stamp on. So stay tuned. So we're very fortunate to have her as well. Some other exciting news is that we are a finalist in Aetna's Voices of Health Contest, which is a nationwide contest to win thirty thousand dollars. So we are one of only thirty-one agencies nationwide to receive this nomination. We have already developed a one-minute video. Some of you could be in it, some of you could not, but, which helps showcase our platform and mission. And once it's reviewed by the folks at Aetna and accepted, we'll then let you know how you can vote for us and send it out to the immediate world. We need more than a hundred and fifty thousand votes. Last year, the winner received more than a hundred and fifty thousand votes, so I'm thinking we're going to have to beat that a little bit. But that could bring us thirty thousand dollars, which would be wonderful. So I'm going to ask for your help in all of this, probably in October, or maybe, yeah, in October. On another note, I just spoke with Chief Eschman, and he gave us the thumbs up that on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from ten a.m. to two, the Drug Enforcement Administration will give the public its eighth opportunity in three years to prevent pill abuse and theft by ridding their homes of potentially dangerous, expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs. And we're going to have our Take Back Day right here at the Berkeley Public Safety. Thank you, Chief. Just as a little aside, last April, Americans turned in three hundred and twenty-four tons, which is six hundred and forty-seven thousand pounds, of prescription drugs at over four thousand sites operated by the DEA. So we're going to be one of many that are going to be doing that. So, and my last thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the decriminalization of marijuana that will be on the Berkeley and Huntington Woods ballot in November. The Tri-Community Coalition is hoping to engage in a large-scale issue campaign in order to defeat this amendment proposal. While the charter amendment in Oak Park passed in August, the Coalition was encouraged by the slim margin of votes the amendment passed by. The results were, the difference in the results were two hundred and forty-eight votes, not a large margin. So if we really put on the screws, we think we can do it here in Berkeley. And it's our feeling that while having little effect on the legality of the drug because of state and federal laws, the initiative could have unintended consequences, signaling to young people that marijuana use is acceptable. It is not. It's our opinion, and I'm hoping it's your opinion as well, that Berkeley families are better off by not extending the production, sale, or use of marijuana in this city. So with that, I would bid you good night and hope to see you in another couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Church. I'm here as President of the Berkeley Rotary Club. Very pleased to announce that the Pancake Breakfast tickets went on sale starting today. So this year's event will take place at the high school, Berkeley High School. We're very grateful that they partnered with us to host it, and it will take place on Saturday, November eighth, from seven-thirty to one p.m. Tickets are six dollars for adults and three dollars for children. You can get tickets from any Berkeley Rotary Club member, and proceeds will benefit the Lids for Kids program through Public Safety. And then we're looking at a literacy initiative with Berkeley Schools. And on the back here, you'll see a thanks to Alex's of Berkeley for donating the pancake batter as they have for so many years. So hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, oh, one more?
I just didn't jump the gun. Anyway, my name is Laura Boos. I'm a resident of Berkeley. Hello, and thank you, everyone, for your service to our city. I'm here to ask you to consider amending City Charter Section 1018, and that has to do with the property tax penalties. As most of us, I had some issues with my basement. I was late on my property tax payment, and when I came in to ask for some sort of abatement, Mr. Sabuda told me that the City Charter makes no provision for any sort of abatement. And that's why I'm here tonight, because that came as a surprise to me. So I went back and I checked the City Charter, and it states that there is a penalty, but there's no explicit prohibition against any sort of abatement. So I'd like to ask you to consider taking that up, and I can tell you, the Internal Revenue Code allows for reasonable cause abatements and a first-time abatement. So the Internal Revenue Code allows something. I'm surprised that, I just think it's very draconian. And I'd be happy to work with anyone on the details, but at a minimum, I would ask you to consider, especially in light of our recent weather events. We were patient with the city. The city couldn't follow up on its or fulfill all of its obligations to us. Some of us may have had difficulties fulfilling our obligations to you. So I don't know what the next step would be. If anyone would care to tell me that, I'd appreciate it. Or you, you have to remain silent.
Correct.
Okay. Then I will maybe get with you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Or Mr. Sabuda.
Thank you very much. Very good. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Approve of the Minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular thirty-fifth City Council meeting on Monday, August eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Approve of the warrant. Matter of approving warrant number twelve eighty-two. Resolution number R twenty-nine fourteen. Matter of recognizing Public Safety Officer William Alfred on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. Resolution number R thirty-fourteen. Matter of recognizing Public Safety Lieutenant John Diani on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. Proclamation number P nine fourteen. Matter of adopting a proclamation designating September as Library Card Sign-Up Month. Resolution number R thirty-one fourteen. Matter of accepting gifts from Ms. Cynthia Haynes to the Berkeley Public Library. And resolution number R thirty-two fourteen. Matter of accepting donations from area businesses and organizations in support of the summer reading program to the Berkeley Public Library.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kedekel. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the Consent Agenda?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, Presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Jack Blanchard to read Resolution twenty-nine fourteen.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Public Safety Officer William Alfred on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. Whereas William Alfred began his career as a Public Safety Officer on February first, nineteen eighty-six, and after twenty-eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of Berkeley, has retired. And whereas during the course of his career, Bill received various certificates of completion for special training in advanced patrol techniques, firefighting strategies, officer's survival tactics, and medical first responder. And whereas, in addition to basic patrol and fire duties, Bill served as a motorcycle, traffic enforcement officer, firearms instructor, mountain bike patrol officer. And whereas, Bill received numerous commendations for outstanding performance encouraged throughout his tenure in Berkeley, including the Departmental Honor, the Distinguished Service Award, the Life Saving Award, and multiple awards from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Association. And whereas, while serving in Berkeley Public Safety Department, Bill demonstrated an extraordinary devotion to traffic safety matters, as well as tireless dedication to all duties. And whereas, Bill developed and initiated and ran the department's very successful Lids for Kids program for ten years, providing free certified bicycle helmets and safety education for children. And whereas, when Bill was not concentrating on keeping Berkeley the safe community we treasure, he spent his spare time with his wife Kristen and children, William and Heather, as well as his four grandchildren. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section One, that William Alfred be and is hereby recognized on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. And the City Council, on behalf of local residents and employees, express sincere thanks and appreciation for his service to our city, and extend our best wishes to Bill and his family. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, I was thinking about Bill's retirement today and jotted down a few notes. I would describe Bill as an absolute team player. Regardless of the specific assignment, Bill eagerly jumped into his duties. In a sports analogy, I would say that whether he was in the game as a quarterback, lineman, or the water boy, Bill demonstrated equal enthusiasm and energy for those duties. He did specialize in the one area, as we know, and that was traffic enforcement. Whenever he was not busy with other police work, firefighting, medical responses, he would always be on patrol, maximizing traffic safety for the community. Now, Bill is doing the same in the City of Harper Woods as a Public Safety Officer. Perhaps the only people glad that he retired from Berkeley will be the habitual traffic violators. The rest of us will miss him. Bill?
Well, first and foremost, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Jack, thank you for reading that resolution. It's been an honor, a privilege to serve. Stuff to leave, but at some point, you have to continue with your life and go on. I've worked with many, many fine professionals, brothers out here, past and present. I will not forget you. Thank you for letting me serve.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. (applause) Harper Woods. Congratulations. Nicely done. And now I have asked Mayor Pro Tim Turbrack to read Resolution thirty-fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Public Safety Lieutenant John Diani on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. Whereas, John Diani began his career as a Public Safety Officer in the Berkeley Public Safety Department on March fourth, nineteen ninety-three, and after twenty-one years of dedicated service to the citizens of Berkeley, has retired. And whereas, during the course of his career, John received various certificates of completion for special training in advanced patrol techniques, officer's survival tactics, firefighting strategies, and medical first responder. And whereas, in addition to police patrol and fire duties, John served as the firearms instructor and hazardous materials technician. And whereas, John was promoted up through the ranks eventually to lieutenant on November nineteenth, two thousand and seven, serving as the officer in charge of a shift, and subsequently was elevated to the position of lieutenant in charge of overall department patrol and fire operations. And whereas, John received numerous recognitions for outstanding service encouraged throughout his tenure in Berkeley, including the Departmental Honor, several commendations, the Life Saving Award, and Officer of the Year. Whereas, while serving in the Berkeley Public Safety Department, John exercised self-initiated performance beyond regular duty assignments and an eagerness to assist citizens, and as a supervisor, demonstrated direct, candid, extraordinarily effective management style. And whereas, when John was not concentrating on keeping Berkeley the safe community we treasure, he spent his spare time with his wife Wendy, daughters Hunter and Darian, and son Joseph, as well as hunting, fishing, boating, and enjoying time with friends. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section One, that John Diani be and hereby is recognized on the occasion of his retirement from the City of Berkeley. And City Council, on behalf of local residents and employees, expresses sincere thanks and appreciation for his service to our city, and extends our best wishes to John and his family. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
Yes, I also wrote down a few things about John, of course. John is an exceptionally versatile person and versatile officer. He excelled in roles, police and fireside of our function. He rose in the department to become the lieutenant in charge of all uniform, police patrol, and firefighting duties. As a supervisor, his decisiveness in difficult circumstances, along with his calm, well-reasoned reactions, provided an example and a direction for the other officers. Everyone trusted his judgment. In our jargon, he was one of the few that was a great street boss. There are not many. He was one of the few. While friendly and interactive with the officers and other personnel, he never forgot his role as a supervisor. He was well-liked and well-respected. Again, difficult to achieve both. And in what I would consider a very unique compliment, behind his back, they always called him Papa Bear. And that's not like a teddy bear. As we all know, it's generally not a good idea to challenge and cross Papa Bear. And so he always, he's affable, he smiles a lot, he does that and the other, but there's that other side. When he had to be a boss, he was, and the people respected that, and I thank him for that. And he has now gone on to be an officer in our neighboring city, Huntington Woods. So we wish him well there. We will be seeing him a lot, because, as you know, we share jail functions and dispatch with Huntington Woods. So he'll still be around, and we still ask him questions, to which he has very sound answers. So we will still be relying on you, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. (applause) I'd just like to say thank you to the current and past Council Administration, and of course, all the officers that I worked with that, you know, many of them showed up for Bill and I, and we really appreciate that. I have to, of course, embarrass my family. I brought them with me, my wife Wendy, my daughters Hunter and Darian and Joseph. You guys can recognize that, especially that one. And of course, without their support, you know, it would have been very difficult. And, you know, just over the years, we got to recognize the citizens of the city who made this a most interesting job, and also the support that they gave was unbelievable, and it's much appreciated on my side, so, or our side. But thank you, I appreciate it. (applause)
Well, Berkeley, they say, is the fifth safest city in the state of Michigan, and there are many reasons for that. And two of them were here tonight, Bill Alfred and John Diani. You will both be missed a great deal in this department and this city. Thank you. And now I have asked Councilmember Stedman to read Proclamation nine fourteen.
This is a proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming September is Library Card Sign-Up Month. Whereas, the library card is the most important school supply of all, and whereas libraries are an essential service for the nation's children, whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a full range of information and services to children and adult learners, whereas libraries offer free access to important educational resources for all ages and types of learners, whereas libraries continue to evolve and expand their services in ways that bring value to their communities, and whereas a free library card is the smartest card you can own. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims September Library Card Sign-Up Month in Berkeley, and encourages everyone to sign up for the smartest card at your library. Proclaim this fifteenth day of February, or February? September? I'm thinking about winter already. Twenty fourteen, at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, signed by Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the librarian is with us.
Just thank you very much for that proclamation. It's nice, as everyone's going back to school and the fall weather is upon us, that the American Library Association undertakes this campaign. It's really nice to be part of a national effort to get the word out. So if you are a Berkeley resident and are at home and you haven't signed up for a library card yet, please stop in and see us and get signed up. So thank you.
Thank you. And you might remain at the podium, because I see the next two items also refer to the library. I have asked Councilmember Edgar to read Resolution thirty-one fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. R thirty-one fourteen is a resolution of the City Council of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting gifts from Mrs. Cynthia Haynes to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas, the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library, has received a donated painting from Berkeley resident Ms. Cynthia Haynes for display at the library. And whereas, Ms. Cynthia Haynes donated a painting she created, inspired by Henri Matisse of A Fish in a Bowl. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section One, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept the gift of a framed painting. And Section Two, the gift provided from Ms. Cynthia Haynes shall be on display at the Berkeley Public Library. And Section Three, the Berkeley Public Library and the City Council are grateful to Ms. Cynthia Haynes for her generous donation that will be enjoyed by those visiting the library. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Back to our library director again.
All right, thank you. Well, here is the lovely painting. If you'll remember, about a year ago, Mrs. Haynes donated another painting to the library. It was of a train. And she came in just about a month ago and said, "I've painted something more colorful, inspired by Henri Matisse." And then she added the cat in here. So we have this on display in our Storytime Room in the children's portion of the library, and it's a very colorful addition to the library. So we're grateful for her willingness to help brighten things up.
Thank you. And thank her.
Beautiful.
It's very beautiful.
Thank you.
And now to read Resolution R thirty-two fourteen, Councilmember Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting donations from area businesses and organizations in support of the summer reading program to the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas, the City of Berkeley, Berkeley Public Library, has received donations from area businesses and organizations for the summer reading program at the library. And whereas, the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library and Vibe Credit Union served as primary sponsors by donating funds for programs, prizes, and related expenses, and Berkeley Bill, Berkeley Shop, Chop Shop, Big B Coffee, Catching Fireflies, Council Thrift Shop, Edible Arrangements, Ellie's Grill, Goin' Postal Royal Oak, Hartfield Lanes, Have You Any Wool, Lunch Cafe, Northern Auto Repairs, Princess Nails, Seela Italian Dining and Pizza, and Uncle Andy's Pizza, served as prize sponsors by donating gift certificates or items. And now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section One, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept these generous donations. And Section Two, the donations provided were utilized to support the summer reading program of the Berkeley Public Library. And Section Three, the Berkeley Public Library and City Council are grateful to the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library and Vibe Credit Union as primary sponsors, and the fifteen other businesses that helped make the summer- the summer reading program possible. Introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Um, really successful summer reading program this year. We had, um, two hundred and seventy-five children registered, sixty-three teens, and a hundred and fifty adults. The kids keep track of the days read throughout the summer, and they read over, um, five thousand nine hundred and forty days. The teens read two hundred and twenty-one books, and the adults read one thousand one hundred books. So this is a great effort to keep, uh, people plugged into reading throughout the summer, and we really couldn't do it without the support of these sponsors. The Friends of the Library donated over two thousand dollars, and Vibe Credit Union donated nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then all of the generous businesses pitched in as well with, uh, gift cards and gift certificates. So we're very grateful. It definitely took a team effort to make this happen, and we're very pleased with the result. So thank you.
Thank you. Quite an extraordinary achievement. And, uh, we thank everyone for their, their support of the library. A central educational feature of our city. And, and all the businesses and, and the individuals who contribute to the library are making an enormous difference to the future of so many people. So if you would come forward, we have those resolutions for you to take back to the library. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R thirty-three fourteen, matter of using an on-premise class liquor license under section five twenty-one A one B P A five oh one of two thousand six to the Robert Bronstein, thirty fifty-two, twelve mile road, Berkeley, Michigan, four eight zero seven two.
Is it a motion to approve R thirty-three fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Kadek with support by Councilmember Stedman. Chief?
I'm pleased to bring this item to you today. Local businessman, Bob Bronstein, who happens to be here, has applied for a redevelopment liquor license to start a business at the former Hiller's Market on Twelve Mile. Uh, the new business will be called Patrick J's Irish Pub. It has gotten approval from the DDA or a recommendation from the DDA for approval. And the Public Safety Department, as is procedure, investigated, uh, Mr. Bronstein. As he, of course, currently operates, owns and is hands-on operator, manager, at Twenty-four Seconds, that was an easy task. We've never had any problems there. Everything checks out fine, and we recommend approval. Now, Ms. Vanson will, uh, will address details here.
Good evening. Uh, the applicant has applied and been approved for a facade change, um, which you have renderings in your packet. And he has submitted building plans that are circulating throughout the Building Department. I don't have, it's a sizable investment. I don't have a value as of yet, um, because it hasn't been determined by the building official as it is circulating, but it is a sizable redevelopment project. As you can see, completely, um, really gutting it and, and putting all new stuff in. So it, it should be a sizable investment, and, um, it'll really dress things up, won't it? It's gonna change that block quite a bit. Do you have any questions for me with regard to investment?
Any questions for Ms. Vanson or for the attorney? Councilmember Baker?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for coming out tonight. Uh, and thanks to the applicant and his, uh, his team for being a part of this, uh, and helping to continue to move the city forward. We really appreciate that. I did have a couple of, uh, questions. This is, uh, tonight's agenda is on the, uh, the class, the, uh, onsite, on-premise class liquor license as part of the proceedings. And so if you could tell us a little bit more just for, uh, general awareness, what that all involves and what that means, uh, that would be great.
Well, I would defer to the city attorney for that one.
Thank you.
I'll tackle that one, if you don't mind. As the chief mentioned, um, this particular license is a little different than, than, you know, your garden variety on-premises license. It's actually a redevelopment, um, liquor license. And this is something that's only been authorized by state law within the last, I'm gonna say, maybe three years. Uh, and it's, it's a license that is, in addition to the Class C quota licenses. And it is a license that, at least in our particular case, is available only for a business that's located within a downtown development authority district. And there are a number of, of eligibility requirements that have to be met. I won't bore with all the technical details, but basically, it has to be a, a, a business that's involved in the, uh, dining, entertainment, and, and recreation business, has to be open to the public, has to be open at least five days a week, has to seat at least twenty-five people. Uh, they're required to make a minimum, uh, investment of, of at least seventy-five thousand dollars toward the, the rehabilitation or restoration of the, the building that they're located in. And there, there are a number of other requirements, too. But it's, it's something that is available in this instance. It's a license that is bought directly from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission as opposed to one that's being transferred from elsewhere. And also, it, this particular license can't be transferred. It can't be granted by you, by, by Berkeley City Council, and then sold or transferred, uh, to another, um, uh, community. Rather, if, uh, if the business, uh, um, doesn't succeed, uh, and, and if it goes out of business, then the license would go back to the state and would be available for Berkeley City Council to, uh, approve for another applicant later on. So it's, it's not a, a commodity like the typical Class C license which can be bought or sold and, and transferred. This one, if approved tonight, uh, and ultimately in Lansing by Liquor Control Commission for issuance here, it will be tied to this particular location.
Great, thank you for that. And I was at the, uh, the DDA meeting, uh, of the board, uh, last week when this, when the applicant came and it was reviewed there, and it was unanimously approved, uh, at the DDA with their full endorsement. Uh, and I will certainly be supporting that tonight. Uh, some of the things that are very tempting to talk about in here include the floor plan and the facade design and things like that. And I was also just curious where in the process, if and when we might be able to engage in those conversations? Or is that through the, the standard procedures, through the, uh, Planning Commission? And it's in their good, capable hands?
Planning Commission approved it.
Excellent.
Last one.
Great.
It, it's all set, and that's why he's applied for building plans, so...
Excellent.
He's, um, gone through the process, and now he's, um, yeah, going through fire inspection and building, building approval.
Excellent. Great, so then I'm sure another question that's on many folks' minds is, is if we were to approve this, uh, tonight, when the, when the construction might begin? An approximate timing of, uh, when it would be, uh, when would be the grand opening? Is there any indication or opportunity to, to learn a little bit more about it, uh, now that you've kind of tempted us? Please? Thank you.
You know, nothing's definite, but we plan, um, building sometime in October, start building in October. And it's probably about a six-month project. So sometime in spring, April, May, is what we're looking to open.
Great, thank you. It sounds like we'll just miss the, uh...
Or St. Patrick's.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. You'll build up to the big one next year.
We'll have a lot of, we'll have a lot of seasoning at the next St. Patrick's Day.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Councilmember Kadek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is X three two Attorney, Staran. So you're saying if he fails, which I'm sure he won't, um, that license will remain in Berkeley?
Well, what will happen, it'll go back to the state, but it will remain available for another applicant to come before you and, and for you to consider for approval. So yes...
Could he use it to try another establishment? Or does he have to reapply again?
He would have to reapply, and, you know, if there were another location within, um, the City of Berkeley DDA, it, it would, would be possible, but it would be a, a reapplication process. It can't just be, we, we can't just approve a transfer. It, it is going to be tied to this particular location, if approved.
Thank you. And question for Mr. Bronstein? The million-dollar question. Where did Patrick J's, where's the name come from?
That's my son's name.
Okay.
Patrick Joseph.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Any, uh, additional questions? Uh, seeing none, uh, the only point here on the, on the legal side of this is it is a redevelopment grant, so, uh, license. So it is contingent upon spending substantial money, like seventy-five thousand dollars.
Seventy-five thousand, minimum. They may very well be doing more.
And of course, you'll be way past that.
They're way past that.
But, but the idea behind, the thinking at the state level is to encourage redevelopment in DDA areas.
That's correct.
That's the thinking that underpins that. Well, Bob, we wish you well. I see you're here with your architect and wife. We're glad that all of you are here, and we wish you the very best going forward.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R thirty-three fourteen?
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M sixty-two fourteen, matter of authorizing the Knights of Columbus, two-two-nine-nine West Twelve Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive in the City of Berkeley on October eleventh through October twelfth, two thousand fourteen, from seven AM to six PM.
Is it a motion to approve M sixty-two fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. This is an item that comes before us every year, uh, the Knights of Columbus Tootsie Roll, um, effort. Uh, are there any questions, discussions on this item? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, R. Uh, just question is, the, I know the Public Safety's reviewed this. Uh, is this the same as last year with all the collection points and everything?
Uh, yes, they plan to do some private business collection points, uh, Westborne, Vibe Credit Union, perhaps CVS, as well as, uh, Coolidge, Twelve Mile, Coolidge, and Catalpa. And still, undetermined is, uh, Coolidge and Eleven Mile. Just on the north side, of course. That's yet, yet to be determined. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Dan Irwin, who's a representative from the organization, and they fund the six charities that we're familiar with. Wonderful effort. And, uh, we looked at it from a safety standpoint. They know to wear the yellow jackets and, and whatnot, so they're visible. It'll be daylight hours only. One adjustment, however, from the application. This was for the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, not just the eleventh and twelfth. And that's it, so, uh, we do recommend approval.
Very good. Anything else on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please the roll, read the roll, or call the roll on, uh, M sixty-two fourteen?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M sixty-three fourteen, matter of authorizing the Girl Scouts of Southeastern Michigan to solicit an annual candy and nut sale and cookie sale in the City of Berkeley on October first through November twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, and December twenty-third through March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Is it a motion to approve M sixty-three fourteen?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadek with support by Councilmember Edgar. Chief?
Well, everyone's familiar with the Girl Scout cookie sales. Some of us perhaps do, uh, do in excess. Enjoy the Samoas and tag-alongs and all the rest. Most of these sales will be online and on telephone. Uh, there will be some booths at various businesses that, that agree to do this and go along with it. Perhaps there will be some of the troops that will do door-to-door. If that happens, uh, Public Safety will be involved in that. There would, would be adult supervision provided to the scouts, of course, and, uh, we would monitor the situation. Um, so it's a regular event, good cause, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this one? Seeing none, uh, then we are set to, uh, have, uh, those cookies.
No samples, though.
No samples.
We should have samples.
I think, I think we should have samples. Ms. Boucher, please, uh, call the roll on M sixty-three fourteen.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Ordinance number O five fourteen, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Finance, Division Two Purchases, Contracts, and Sales of the Berkeley City Code to modify the city's purchasing procedures and regulations.
Is it a motion to approve O five fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Mayor Protem Terbrach. Chief?
There, uh, there was a work session on this at the last council meeting.
Correct.
And, uh, this new version contains the changes as discussed by your body. The city attorney, Senator, will address it.
Um, yes, Council, you may remember we had a, uh, rather detailed discussion about this at the, uh, last work session we had, where we, uh, worked, uh, all the way through the ordinance from, from back to front, as, as I recall. A little unusual, but effective. Um, there are a number of, um, uh, cleanup and, and, and minor changes in the ordinance, but the, uh, the principal major changes that come before you are, uh, raising the threshold before, uh, city administration is required to obtain competitive sealed bids, um, moving that up from six thousand dollars to seventy-five hundred dollars, um, to basically keep up with the times. It hadn't been changed in a long time. Um, and just to remind Council, this does not eliminate the requirement for competitive bidding. We have competitive bidding throughout our process, but it's just not requiring that extra step of going out and issuing a formal RFP and advertising it and obtaining sealed bids until we've gone over that threshold of, of seventy-five hundred dollars. Also, to keep up with the times, uh, we authorize, through this ordinance, if adopted, we authorize the, um, uh, city to utilize the, the internet and other multimedia modern forms of communication to actually advertise for bids and not simply restrict them to, um, uh, using newspapers only. We've also included in the ordinance a provision that allows the City Council to waive purchasing requirements in, in cases you deem appropriate to do so. Uh, we also, through this ordinance, would authorize Council to forego competitive biddings in order to extend an existing contract. Basically, that's a change to conform to what has, has been the practice somewhat. And really, the last significant change we make is, is really a clarification, uh, and it's something that we added since the work session, and that is to make it very clear that in the event that, um, city assets and equipment are being sold, that, uh, city employees are eligible to bid and purchase on that subject to our, uh, internal administrative policies. So, um, those are the highlights. So those are the highlights. We certainly discussed this in far more detail last time. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for our city attorney? Certainly, the final product is reflective of our deliberations the last time.
And I did change practicable to practical.
That. I noticed that. I noticed that. So if there is no additional discussion, then at this time, we can go forward. And Ms. Spoucher, can you please call the roll on O-five fourteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M sixty-four fourteen, matter of designating Councilmember Eileen Stedman as a voting delegate and Councilmember Alan H. Kadekko as an alternate voting delegate at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Convention to be held in Marquette, October fifteenth through seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
Is it a motion to approve M sixty-four fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Edgar. Chief?
I believe this one's yours, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ball bounces back.
Yes, it does.
The Michigan Municipal League is a very important organization, and the city of Berkeley is a member. It is an important organization in terms of learning all of the activities and the operations and the processes that are utilized across all the cities in the state of Michigan. And so, from time to time, for every year, there is a major conference. And this time, our delegate to the conference is going to be Councilmember Stedman and the alternate Councilmember Kadekko. Now, on the board of directors of that august state organization is our colleague here, Councilmember Baker. And so Berkeley is very well represented at the state level on this important state organization. Keeps us aware of all the changes and all the lobbying and all the laws that might affect us in Lansing. And we're enormously pleased by Councilmember Baker's representation on that board. His leadership is remarkable, and it has been noted in a number of places by other people. And we congratulate you as we call the roll on this item sending two others to represent us. Please call the roll on M sixty-four fourteen.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
I didn't get any lit. I don't even know who I'm voting for. I guess I'll just, I'll take the mayor's word for it. Yes, yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Very good, very good.
Now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M sixty-five fourteen, matter of approving special use approval, SU zero-four fourteen, to Big B Coffee, thirty-six-hundred Twelve Mile, to establish an outdoor cafe on private property in front of the building on the condition that a trash receptacle be located outside and no outside sound system be installed.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-five fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, support by Councilmember Edgar.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm asking if I can abstain, as Big B and Ed and Marcel are clients of mine.
Very good. Without objection, Councilmember Kadekko can abstain. No objection, very good. Chief?
I'm going to refer this to the city planner, Ms. Vance.
So Big B Coffee wants to put four tables outside, beaster tables small, because they have a pretty skinny sidewalk, so this would not impede pedestrian traffic along their service walk that's abutting the building. Planning Commission held a public hearing, which is required under ordinance, and had no public comments whatsoever. They have recommended approval with the addition of a trash receptacle, and they wanted to clarify that there would be no outside music. It was observed that this is probably one of, as far as outside dining goes, this is probably one of the most sheltered locations. I pointed out Panini Press on Woodward is pretty sheltered as well as Einstein Bagels, too. But as far as effect on the neighborhood, we believe this would be very minimal, and it's nice on pleasant days to sit outside, isn't it? Because they seem to be fewer and far between these days.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our city planner? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one, the trash receptacle is a great idea. Do we specify that that be a closed one, so things can't blow out of it, kind of?
We did not specify the style of it. I will, you can certainly add that to the motion to approve to make sure that it has a.
I think that would be something that we want to make sure, we don't want something blowing out of the trash thing. Most of the big commercial ones now, you push it in, you know, and it can't blow out. I think that would be, should be added to the motion.
Is that acceptable to the makeup of the motion?
Yes.
Yes, and to the second, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Very good. Anything else to be added? Nice idea.
It is a nice idea.
And it should work very well over there.
I think so, too.
Thank you. Ms. Spoucher, would you please call the roll on M sixty-five fourteen?
Edgar?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M sixty-six fourteen, matter of awarding Library Design Associates Incorporated, eleven forty-nine South Main Street, Plymouth, Michigan, four-eight-one-seven-zero, to repair laminate work surfaces on staff and public desks, refinish the wood surface of the floor on the train in the children's room, replace the lobby entrance pitter grid, replace five charging port units at the adult tables, and add four charging ports to the adult study corrals at the library for a cost not to exceed ten thousand four hundred eighty-seven. Three thousand five hundred will be paid building maintenance account one-oh-one-seven-three-eight-nine-three-one-zero-zero-zero, and six thousand nine hundred eighty-seven will be paid from capital outlay, eight-one-five-nine-four-zero-nine-seven-six-seven-three-eight.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-six fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Chief?
The library director, Mr. Church, will handle this one.
All right, thank you. We had several library building projects planned for this fiscal year, so put them all together into an RFP so that we could tackle several things at once. The RFP was issued on August fourteenth, and we had the opening on September third. So we were looking at the projects that have been outlined here. We need to reseal some banks of windows along Coolidge and then repair some drywall inside. Some water has been seeping in there. We're looking to repair the laminate work surfaces on the staff and public desks. So the laminate surface has started to separate from the furniture itself, and we need to resecure that. The wood surface of the floor on the train in the children's room, it's very heavily used, lovingly used, but it is fifteen years old, so the varnish has started to wear off, and we'd like to preserve that before it does actual damage to the wood. When you come into the library, the pitter grid is the floor surface between the far exterior door and the interior door. So just in that internal vestibule, we'll be replacing that. No one bid on the interior painting, so I'll go out and solicit at least three quotes for that and pursue that later. But then we also have the charging ports, the replacement of five charging ports, and then we're adding four charging ports to the study corrals at the far end of the library. Fifteen years ago, when the building was renovated, laptops and other devices weren't as heavily used as they are now. So that will be a nice addition at the study corrals. People will no longer need to bring in orange extension cords, which some people have been doing. So I think this will be a nice way to bring the library up to date. So on this motion specifically, Library Design Associates has bid on the bulk of the work, and they are a very reputable firm. Can I entertain any questions?
Any questions, discussion on this expenditure? Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you looked into, you're repairing the laminate work surfaces? Have you looked into, I mean, I'm assuming they're fifteen years old, too?
Yes.
Have you looked into replacing them? Are they in need of that, or is this going to be enough?
For the most part, they're all structurally sound, so I think that this will be a good low-cost measure to keep things in good shape and get many more years out of their life.
What still exists.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody else with discussion on this matter? Seeing none, then we move along to the vote on M sixty-six fourteen.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number nine?
Motion number M sixty-seven fourteen, matter of awarding DJ and Associates Incorporated, P.O. Box one-fifty, New Hudson, Michigan, four-eight-zero-one-six-five, to reseal seven banks of windows along Coolidge and to repair related damage to the interior walls at the library for a cost not to exceed four thousand seven hundred forty-eight from the building maintenance account one-oh-one-seven-three-eight-nine-three-one-zero-zero-zero.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-seven fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar, support by Councilmember Kadekko. I see the library director's still up there, so.
Still up here.
Assuming we're going to.
After the evening.
My question, to begin with, why are these two items separated out?
Just because they were being awarded to separate contractors, so.
Reasonable answer.
Okay, very good.
We should have held tonight's meeting at the library.
Are there any questions for our librarian on this? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not so much a question, just a comment and compliment. I want to thank you for continuing to help steward the, not only the materials that we offer, but the space, the atmosphere, the environment within which folks can enjoy all that the library has to offer, both in the materials and also the camaraderie and the spirit of a community that such a facility offers. I think these kinds of modest and appropriate investments in the facility create that context for folks to be effective. And just really pleased with the work that you're doing there and glad to support this again tonight.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Councilmember Edgar?
Mr. Mayor, I want to second that. I have friends from different cities who come to Berkeley to use our library.
It's very good to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. I notice this has all worked to be completed prior to December thirty-first. Do we think it'll take that long, or is that just?
No, that's just to give enough time. I know that we're going to be doing some sprinkler work that was approved a few months ago on November eleventh, when the library is closed, so I'll extend that date to these contractors as well. They'll be able to do much of the work outside the building, but they may save the drywall repairs on that day, at least the messiest parts.
Thank you.
And I'll just clarify that their zip code is four-eight-one-six-five.
Very good. If there is no additional discussion, then we will move along to support this very important work keeping our library glistening.
Thank you.
So that the study can be top quality while people are there. Ms. Spoucher, please call the roll on M sixty-seven fourteen.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number ten?
Motion number M sixty-eight fourteen, matter of appointing Andrew Assamacher to the zoning board of appeals with the term expiring July two thousand sixteen.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-eight fourteen?
Move to approve M sixty-eight fourteen.
To approve by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Chief?
Once again, Your Honor, I get to bounce this back to you.
Very good. Well, thank you. The ZBA is a very important board in our city, and tonight we are appointing Andrew Assamacher to this important position. And I see he's here in the audience. Mr. Assamacher, would you like to share a word or two?
Yes, I'd like to thank the council members and you, Mayor, for the opportunity to serve the city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for your willingness, you know, to volunteer for this board and for all our volunteers, because it does take a lot of time going to meetings, preparing for meetings, thinking the items to be discussed, thinking them through. And we are enormously pleased that people like you come forward and are willing to put your talents, your time, to the service of the community.
It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also thank you, Mr. Assamacher, for joining the ZBA. And I just want to remind everyone out at home, we are still one member and two alternates short on the ZBA. So if anyone's interested, please see Ms. Spoucher or Ms. Vance. Thank you.
Just a couple of additional points on Mr. Assamacher. He is a member of the Michigan Regional Council of Carpenters.
Correct.
And he has been involved as a specialist joiner and finish work in that field for many, many years. And so you bring a perspective that will be valuable, I think, on that board. Member also of Our Lady of La Salle Parish. And I see here also in Mary's in Grectown.
Yes.
As well. With that, if there are any other questions, I see here your spouse is with you, and we're glad to welcome you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, then, Ms. Spoucher, please call the roll on M sixty-four fourteen.
M sixty-eight fourteen, Mayor?
Yep.
Terbrach?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Spoucher, would you please read item number eleven?
Resolution number R thirty-four fourteen, matter of authorizing amendment of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen operating budget, those operating funds as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R thirty-four fourteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Chief?
Yes, Your Honor, this time we're going to detail this to the finance director, Mr. Suboda.
Very good.
Who will make the presentation.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. What you have before you this evening are six budget amendments to that deal with fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and for that deal with fourteen, fifteen. I do want to point out, first, before we get into the items, item B. I have a typographical error, and I want to highlight that before we get started. On B, on the first line, general fund expenses, the amendment or change should read one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, one sixty-seven, comma, zero-zero-eight. And the total for that, for item B, would be an amendment totaling one hundred and eighty-two thousand, one sixty-seven. My mistake. I apologize for an inconvenience. Okay, item A, what you have here is a internal service fund. We fund per employment contracts, leave accruals, and basically, six funds support this fund. So what is happening here is the transfer in is receiving dollars from six operating funds totaling one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Expenses, expense increases, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand. What's happening here is the difference is interest earnings. We have interest earnings that is helping this fund, along with, we've had credits, or what has happened is people are using their leave time. And so liabilities are reducing, and the liability reductions were greater than the budget that we had set up. So that's why you have a difference between the revenue and the expense. Now, if you look at item B, here are the six funds that fund the internal service fund, and that's because the employees work out of these six funds, across all departments, across all areas. So the general fund would transfer in one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, zero-zero-eight. The major street fund, five thousand seventy-two dollars. Local street fund, three thousand five fifty-three. Solid waste fund, forty-five hundred. The arena fund, five twenty-nine, and then the recreation revolving fund, fifteen hundred and two dollars. So the one that would total one hundred and eighty-two and sixty-seven, those dollars are coming over to the six-ninety fund. And then what happens is assets equal liabilities for a zero fund balance. So we have the liability fully funded in this respect at June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Any questions on the first two? Kind of complicated, but you're moving monies from one funds to the other.
Correct.
Okay. Moving along to C through F, you have, these are carry-forward amendments. So what this means is this, is in thirteen, fourteen, council has approved various projects. They are in various stages of completion. So what we're doing is we're bringing the unused appropriation in from thirteen, fourteen into fourteen, fifteen. The first, item C deals with the public safety department. They had a carpeting project and a bulletproof glass project going on at the department. We're bringing those funds over from thirteen, fourteen into fourteen, fifteen, to the tune of seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Item D is a land improvement amendment. What is happening here is this, is we are, we are finishing up the drainage at the J.C. Park, and twenty-three hundred and fifty-eight dollars are moving from thirteen, fourteen into fourteen, fifteen, staying in the same line item. This will cover the remaining expenses of the project within the general fund. The vehicles, water sewer, item E, what you have here is one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight-twenty. If you recall, the full dollar value was approximately one hundred and seventy thousand dollars for a water truck. And what you're doing is that truck was delivered to us in July, and we made the final payment at the end of August. And we need to bring the appropriation forward from thirteen, fourteen into fourteen, fifteen, for a total of one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Any questions here for A, B, C, D, or C, D, or E? The last one, item F, is the drainage project. Again, this project was split between the general fund and the recreation revolving fund. Another twenty-one hundred dollars coming from thirteen, fourteen into fourteen, fifteen. And that would be the conclusion of the carry-forward amendments. We will have one more, to best of my knowledge, which will come at the next council meeting for another project, but that will happen in October. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the council may have. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for our Finance Director?
Thank you for your patience. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Voucher, please call the roll on R. 3414.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting, and Councilmember Blanchard is up first.
Well, I'd just like to say thanks to Bill Alfred and John Deani for their years of service. They've done a wonderful job for us, and we greatly appreciate it. And the other item I've got is that the Berkeley Chamber of Commerce golf outing is this Friday, so if anybody wants to play, it's coming up soon. Get your money in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman?
There's a few programs coming up in the library that people might be interested in. On the 20th of September at 2:00 PM, there's a program entitled Border Crossing: Coming of Age in the Czech Resistance, and they're having, it is written by, from the perspective of Charles Novacek, born in Ozdany, Czechoslovakia, now Slovakia, in 1928, who actively participated with his family in the Czech Resistance against the Nazis and communists from the age 11 to 20. And this is sponsored by the Friends of the Library, and you can call the library to register for that. The next one is Tuesday, September 23rd at 6:30, the Gift of Life Power of Organ Donation. Join us for what is sure to be an inspirational and moving evening. Hear a personal story about the power of organ donation and the impact Gift of Life Michigan has on both the giver's family and the recipient. A donor memorial quilt that pays tribute to those who have donated will be on site, and you'll have the opportunity to learn more about organ, eye, and tissue donation. And if you haven't already considered doing this, it's really very important, and I believe we have four organ donors, people who have received organ donations in the city of Berkeley. So it's a very important thing. Consider it. eBooks at the library. If you want to get eBooks for your iPad, Kindle, or whatever device you want to put it on, attend this free class to learn how to download eBooks from the library's online collection. Bring your device if you'd like hands-on help after the class. It's reserved for just Berkeley residents, and you can register by calling the library. Those are the programs for adults right now offered by the library, but look onto the city website and go to the library, and look at all of the things they offer. They offer an incredible number of fantastic programs for children and adults. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening again, everyone. It was H.L. Hunt who once said, "Decide what you want and decide what you are willing to exchange for it. Establish your priorities and go to work." Again, that's decide what you want and decide what you're willing to exchange for it. Establish your priorities and go to work. Now, it's kind of interesting. I did a little research on this following. It turns out H.L. Hunt was an oil tycoon in Dallas, and then he was the one that they made the character J.R. Ewing after in the Dallas TV show, so it was kind of funny. He was Texas. So anyway, so he put his mind to work there, and our DDA is doing likewise. Our Town Development Authority is likewise establishing their priorities and figuring out what they want to do and charting the course to help move forward. We already heard about one exciting program that's underway here with Patrick J.'s Irish Pub to help revitalize our downtown and to continue the positive progression that we have in our city. And one of the things that the board is working on is the list of priorities for this coming cycle here, the 2014-15 cycle. They're working through this consolidated list now, and they'll be approving this in one of their subsequent meetings here. Just like to highlight two of the potential projects that I imagine will be high up on that list. The first, again, being the Coolidge Highway. There was a traffic study done recently to talk about ways to improve safety and throughput there for both pedestrians and various forms of other people, mechanisms to get back and forth, bicycles and wheelchairs and strollers and all that kind of fun stuff to help everybody move around. That will bring into the notion of the complete streets and then again the safe passage across Coolidge that so many folks can enjoy all that we have to offer on that wonderful stretch of our downtown. Looking to the 12 Mile side, we imagine another project will be the Robina intersection, either the north or the south or both sides of 12 Mile there. There's been considerable amount of activity and interest in doing something with that space. It's called activating that space or creating a place or placemaking. Those are all like buzzwords and things like that, but what it really means is creating a spot in the town that people are excited about and that say, "Yeah, you know, I want to go there. I want to be a part of that." And we've, we mentioned the Michigan Municipal League earlier. The MML helped us out by organizing a project over the summer to do a study of that Robina portion of our downtown, and it was tremendously well-received by all the various businesses and groups and residents and visitors to the city as part of the Art Bash and other forums for information. So we're real excited about the kinds of things that we can do here in the city, along our entire downtown, some of the great investments that our businesses are making, as we heard again earlier this evening, the kinds of things that we could do in Coolidge to make it safe and accessible for all folks to get from point A to point B, and then the kinds of things we can do to help put that spark of energy into the heart of our downtown there at the Robina section. So more to come. Some of the next steps on that would be to have public forums, public input sessions, design charrettes, those kinds of things, to give folks an opportunity to voice more of their opinions and thoughts about what we could do with that particular part of the city. So we're excited about that. Those are the kinds of things that we'd like to move forward with and figure out how we want to set those priorities and get to work. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Terbrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, I want to congratulate and thank the Parks and Rec Department, Tom, Teresa, Scott, Dan, and everybody, on another tremendous Summer Fest season. Summer Fest is officially over, as you can tell by this weather. We have moved right into the winter, and, you know, there are events that are scheduled, but a ton of preparation, but also a ton of manpower goes into pulling all of those events off. It may be, you know, just one event for a few hours, but the people at the department, the volunteers at the department, they spend tremendous time making sure that those events go off as well as they did this year. Also, I want to thank everybody, and I look forward to another Summer Fest coming up next year. Also, in the Parks and Rec Department, we are continuing to be cutting-edge department over here, a very progressive city. We are the first in the state of Michigan to install what's known as a look-up line at our ice arena. Those of you that are familiar with ice arenas or hockey, what this is, is an orange line, about 40 inches, I believe, to the boards of the arena, and it is so that when a player is skating, whether it be a young child or older, whoever you are, you get to that line and you realize, "Oh, there's orange under my feet. I'm in the danger zone." And that danger zone is, if you get hit into the boards in that distance, you're tremendously, you have much higher chances of head and neck injuries. And we're trying to cut out as much as possible of serious head and neck injuries, especially in younger hockey players. As somebody who has had his head smashed into those boards many times, which explains a tremendous amount to everybody, but also somebody who has coached young kids and seen, you know, concussions and various other injuries, the hockey purist in me says it's going to look awfully silly. You know what? It's going to, but it's, the benefits far outweigh that. I'll get used to that very quickly, but if it's going to help protect some kids and some adults from head injuries and neck injuries, I am certainly very, very supportive of it. And as I said, we are the first in the state of Michigan, first arena in the state, to have this line. There are some other states that are a little further north, a little west of us, that have them a little bit more. We are the first. I certainly expect that this will be a trend that you'll see pick up in youth arenas all around the state of Michigan. I want to thank Dr. Jeff Pierce. He owns Core Sports and Fitness, the lead doc for Michigan Sports and Spine Clinic. He sponsored and paid for this line, and it's, you know, I'm giving everybody here a heads up of the heads up. Look out. Steve would have had a much better delivery on that one. I'm not very punny or funny. Keep coming, though. Finally, try to wrap this up for everybody before things get out of control. A couple Fridays ago, we had some severe storms go through our city, and I know our public safety officers were extremely, extremely busy that day. I talked to some of them that day that said it was the busiest day they've ever had in the city of Berkeley. We recognized a couple of officers today on the occasion of their retirement and talked about some of the tremendous work that they did for the city of Berkeley, how dedicated they were. I want to say the same thing for all of our officers. There happened to be a fire in one of my neighbor's garage. It was on fire that Friday evening, and our officers were all there, all ready to go, handled the situation as well as it could possibly have been handled. Leadership was great. The chief was there. Everybody was there doing their jobs, making sure, you know, and there wasn't anything they could do about the garage, unfortunately, because there's a power line on it, you can't spray water on that, but they protected the houses that were very close to that garage. Everybody was safe and sound, and, you know, fortunately, I was there just because it was around the block from me next door to my uncle's house, but, you know, the only positive side was I got to witness just the true professionals that we have working for us, and we are all lucky to have them in the city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Edgar?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. I just want to follow up with Mayor Pro Tem Terbrecht's comments on our Public Safety Department. They're just amazing, and I'm so impressed with all of their work. And again, congratulate Officer William Alfred and Lieutenant John DeGiani. I also want to thank Ms. Cynthia Haynes and make sure that she realizes how appreciative we are of her bringing a little of higher feeling to, of art to our library. It's a very nice thing to have donated. And thank Matt Church, of course, for his tireless work at the library. And that's all I have today.
Thank you, Councilmember Kadekko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Problem with going less, you sometimes repeat, but as Mayor Pro Tem said about the fire on Tyler Friday night, it wasn't even 24 hours later, our public safety officers were fighting a similar fire on Gardner right by the community center. And again, they were out there, they were tired, but let me tell you, they don't stop, and we are very fortunate to have such great public safety officers, as well as DPW was out there again, you know, with the power outages and trying to help with, you know, the best they could with the branches and the trees that were falling all over, so I want to thank them. As far as Summer Fest, the movie night was a huge success. Community too is pretty well-crowded, including every mosquito, I think, that was on this side of Coolidge. So some people did leave a little early, but they showed the movie Frozen, and those that were there had a real good time. Again, I want to welcome Mr. Assamacher to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I look forward to seeing you at the meetings, and I'm sure you'll be an asset to that board. Starting the 24th of the evening of the 24th begins the 10 Days of Repentance, or the Jewish New Year, called Rosh Hashanah, ending on October 4th, the evening with Yom Kippur, the Day of Atonement. So I'd like to say le shanat tova, a good year to all the Jewish people out there, and may you have a happy and sweet year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Chief?
I would just like to say thank you for the nice comments here about the Public Safety Department. We appreciate that. You were there, Mr. Mayor, also at both of those fires.
That's right.
And the guys appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Subuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Ms. Voucher?
Thank you, Mayor. Tuesday, November 4th is the general election. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Monday, October 6th is the last day to register to vote in the November general election. Monday, November 3rd by 4:00 PM is the last day to apply for an absentee voter ballot. If you apply for an absentee voter ballot on November 3rd, you are required to vote the same day at the City Hall. Absentee voter ballots are due back Tuesday, November 4th by close of polls at 8:00 PM. Saturday, November 1st is the last day to send out absentee voter ballots through regular mail. The Clerk's Office is accepting election worker applications for the November general election. The applications to vote for absentee voter ballots and for election worker applications is available on the city website and at the City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your Honor, early in the meeting during public comments, a resident raised the question about a possible charter amendment concerning property tax abatement, and I regret the resident had to leave. Would counsel like me to comment on that a little bit now or at another time?
That would be wonderful.
All right. It's certainly something that we will look at further and can even respond more formally. The short answer is, I think Finance Director Subuda gave the correct answer to the resident. Property taxation in Michigan is not a function of local charter, but rather it's state law and it's uniform throughout the state, and the ability to abate or exempt someone from taxes is very restrictive. In short, one must either qualify for one of the laundry lists of property tax exemptions that is in the General Property Tax Act, or else there's just no ability to get them. We cannot, as a municipality, by contract or by special exemption or by ordinance or even by charter, modify what's in the state law. There is a provision in the state law, there is a state law exemption that does allow for our March Board of Review to grant exemptions or partial exemptions based on poverty or hardship, but in order to qualify for that, and again, it's only the March Board of Review that can do that, not the council, not the administration, but that's only available for folks who come below the federal poverty guidelines. It's not an exemption that's available, unfortunately, just due to people running into, you know, personal hardships or natural, you know, catastrophes such as we recently endured and so on. So that's kind of a general overview answer. I can certainly work with the city administration to more directly respond to the resident, but I just wanted to make that clear before anything starts gaining momentum, that it's not something that we can address through local ordinance or charter, but rather it's a state law issue. The other things I wanted to mention on a different topic, and I'll certainly answer any questions about that, just to keep counsel abreast of what we're up to, we are still working on really a multifaceted plan. The mayor's been involved too, as the city administrator and the planning director, trying to deal with parking issues over in the Eaton Street area and just in general. I mean, one of the prongs of that multifaceted plan is we have been working on developing a valet parking ordinance, and that's currently undergoing staff review, so that's probably something that we'll see at a workshop sometime in the foreseeable future. We are also working with some of the businesses over there, the Vincetta Garage folks and the T-Mobile folks, and we think we've come up with a concept, again largely spearheaded by the mayor, that will allow for a very efficient and perhaps optimum use of the property off of Eaton that currently is owned by the Vincetta Garage folks and the T-Mobile folks, and may involve a possible reconfiguration of that property in a way that it can be very efficiently designed, won't solve all the problems, but will, is a step in that direction. We're also working with the owners of some of the other existing surface lots over in that area, again, looking to hopefully not create any more new asphalt than we need to out there, to maximize the use of what's there and to hopefully alleviate, once and for all, the parking problems that the businesses and the residents over there have had to endure. We're also looking at the scavenging ordinance. We'll probably be bringing that back to you. It's actually something we were looking at a little bit before, but certainly as a result of the storm. of the, the storm and the basement flooding and the, the unfortunate backlog and delay in, in getting trash picked up. A couple weeks ago, we had some scavenging issues. You, you heard about some of that at your last council meeting from, from some of our residents. So, we're looking at tweaking that ordinance to, to tighten it up some, make it a little more enforceable, try to address some of the enforcement issues that, that came up during our efforts, during the Public Safety Department's efforts to, to try to enforce that ordinance. And last but not least, medical marijuana. I don't think a meeting goes by that we don't talk about that a little bit. It was mentioned earlier during public comments that the Marijuana Initiative ballot question's going to be beyond the ballot for Berkeley voters in November. Now, that's not medical marijuana per se, rather, that's really more for recreational use, and it's, it's an initiative, but what I'm talking about is just our ongoing review of the topic of medical marijuana and just anticipating that sometime in the near future, possibly after the November elections, there's probably going to be a push at the state level to move forward with some of the proposed legislation, some of the proposed bills that have been kind of sitting there in, in, in committee during an election year. I expect some of those will move forward, and there's a very good chance that they will be, some legislation adopted that will legalize medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana businesses subject to local regulation. So, right now, based on court decisions, those businesses are illegal, but some of the legislation that the pundits think have a, have a good chance to move forward will partially overturn those court decisions and legitimize those businesses, but throw it back to the locals like us to do something about it. So, in anticipation that we may have to do something about it and so that we can be proactive rather than reactive, we're working with Amy Vanson, and we'll be working with, with the chief as well to try to have some regulations ready to go if and when we need them.
Very good. Thank you. Well, we are all gathering up the pieces in the aftermath of the August eleventh flood and, of course, the windstorm of ten or so days ago. Some of us are finding out that we have had a little more damage than we had anticipated or estimated. Now, the city has provided FEMA with every piece of information they required. They came to the city twice. They toured homes that were especially damaged and talked to residents. They will do this throughout the tri-county area, and then they will come up with a determination on the next steps. Our Communications Department, which, by the way, has done a superb job throughout this whole ordeal, will continue to keep the community aware of developments from the FEMA end. So, we will keep that rolling out on our webpage and through eBlast as things change. Over a thousand insurance claims have been passed along to the city insurance company, and they will respond to each resident's claim individually and make their determinations. At the next city council meeting, we expect to have Oakland County Drain Commissioner, Mr. Jim Nash, here to address some questions about the Twelve-Town Drain and share with the council and the residents his thoughts on dealing with such a flood. The city manager is working with a focus group of residents who have had property loss due to the flood, and they're working to streamline the permit application process and also to make recommendations to the council on which permit fees might be waived or reduced and for what period of time. And that will be coming before the council, probably by the next council meeting. Those who have already paid for permits as they repaired flood damage, we are keeping a list of all of those people, and in the event that some permit is waived, they will be refunded their money accordingly. The events of nine eleven were recalled a few days ago. Of course, the loss of life was horrendous. The families affected bear that loss every day. The first responders who were there on that day and, and who continue to stand ready to protect and serve, as well as the legions of volunteers who helped and continue to help, all deserve a place in our prayers every day. In Berkeley, the ancient advice blossom where you're planted was certainly on display over the period of the last several weeks. As you heard from my colleagues here on the council, our city employees from top to bottom and all of the people who volunteered to work with them went beyond the call of duty. On behalf of all our residents and the city council, may I extend a simple and sincere thank you to each one of them. We are blessed to have them. And now, Ms. Boucher, we are going to have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadekko?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. September fifteenth meeting is adjourned.